I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 10th, 2020, and the time is 7:00 PM. And you will notice that Dr. Hillman is not sitting next to me, rather Director of Community Services, Erin Bailey. And Dr. Hillman is in the process of, as the Board knows, the National Superintendent Certification Program through AASA, and he is away finishing that program, which has been a two-year program. So we admire Dr. Hillman for his commitment to professional development, and we fully support it as a Board. We know it will help our district in numerous ways. So, welcome Erin. With that, there were some items in the table file.
There were a couple of items in the table files. There was a gift agreement, a couple personnel items, and a grant application.
Okay, excellent. We'll add these to the, items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for residents, business and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the Board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the Board? All right, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Erin?
Well, we have several exciting athletics announcements tonight. First, congratulations to the following Northfield High School athletic teams. Girls Hockey was a Big Nine Champ. Girls Alpine was a Big Nine Champ. And Wrestling was a Big Nine Champ. So congratulations to all three of those teams. Also, congratulations to the following individual athletes. Girls Going to State Alpine include Senior Megan Stein, Junior Libby Brust, and 7th Grader Liv Murphy. And Nordic Skier Caroline Peterson earned a trip to state. And finally, congratulations to Girls Hockey Coach Paige Haley, who was named Big Nine Coach of the Year.
Excellent. Board members, any other announcements? All right, I do have one. Despite Dr. Hillman being away, I did want to talk about his recent award that he received from the Northfield Area Chamber of Commerce at their recent recognition banquet. And Dr. Hillman was awarded the Chamber Champion Award for his leadership and his dedication to the veteran of the community. And Dr. Hillman was actually really instrumental in helping them with their strategic planning skills. No surprise, he did help the Chamber immensely this year in terms of helping them through their strategic planning process and just how much the Chamber of Commerce appreciates his dedication to the Chamber and again, to the community. And as Board members, we certainly appreciate Dr. Hillman's. He is a ex officio member of the Chamber of Commerce, and it's just really an excellent way for the school district to have that connection with the business community. We are so appreciative of our business community, and it's a way that we have that connection with them and are able to offer the additional support that we're able to do through Dr. Hillman's work with the Chamber of Commerce. So congratulations to Matt for that award. So with that, we will move on to our items for discussion and report. Our first item is co-curricular additions. Activities Director Joel Olson is here tonight. Welcome Joel.
Hello.
Thank you for being here, and he will outline the additions, and we'll have an opportunity for questions.
Thank you very much. So my proposal is to take one of the dance team coaches, assistant coaches, and move that to lacrosse, either girls or boys, for that position. And the girls and boys lacrosse right now have a .5 third assistant coach each. So what I want to do is combine those two to make a full assistant. So then we would have a head and two assistants at the lacrosse boys, and a head and assistant, two assistants at lacrosse girls. The reason for that, both of those programs, their numbers are around 50-plus kids. And with only two coaches, that makes it really difficult for supervision, safety, coaching, those kinds of things. Dance team this year has currently four coaches, and they had about 25 kids out for dance team this year. So by taking one of those away and adding that to lacrosse, I think that just bolsters both of those, leaves both the girls and boys programs for having three coaches.
Okay, so is there any questions? Amy?
I was just wondering, is it going to be one coach that's shared between, or are they going to be separate people?
Separate people, yep.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? So I, what, oh, I'm sorry, did someone have any? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So thanks Joel. I was just, in the total cost piece, so I just wanted to make sure I understood, so the, the dance team, the, the negative is, is what, the person, the, we will no longer be paying for it, and then that money, the difference, so I'm trying to understand the...
Yeah, so the, so the dance team is at a higher level, a higher level pay rate than the lacrosse's. So we'll actually be saving, I think it was about $800 by moving that position over.
Great question. My question was just, I'm assuming the numbers come together in terms of how you have to look at it for Title IX?
Yep.
And I'm assuming that calculation gets done. Is that, does that ever get challenging when you have to make these sort of, kind of adjustments? Because it's really, this is really a sort of participation issue, and so, but you have that sort of that overarching Title IX?
Yeah, and the Title IX piece comes into play with, and we, and we should probably look at that as a whole, as do an audit of the whole program, where you look at the total number of students, female, total number of male in your school, and are you, are you meeting a representative percentage of those students in your programs? And by doing that, you got to look at, do we need to add programs or things like that? So with the coaching piece, you always want to make sure when you are either adding or taking away, you're looking at balancing out, so you're not taking it more from the girls. And it really is more geared towards the girls, where you don't want to be taking away from them if you're not doing that same thing with the boys.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other last questions? Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
To present this. I believe then we will have this item for individual action at our February 24th board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Joel. All right, our next two items will be presented by Director of Finance Val Murgendorf. That is the Debt Service Fund Budget and the Internal Service Fund Budget, as we work our way through all the various budget lines, or budget as we endeavor to get to them all. Welcome Val.
Thank you. I know you guys really look forward to all my exciting budget presentations.
We actually do.
Hi. So I will go through the debt service first. So just a couple reminders about what the debt service fund, it's obviously its own operating fund separate than the general fund, that is really intended to house the revenue that comes in to pay our debt from various bonds and the expenditures that go out for those. We are required by the state to levy 105% of our total debt payments, just to ensure that we can make those payments. And then as a reminder, that obviously builds up because we have 5% extra each year, and then the state goes through a calculation called the excess calculation, to basically, if we have too much fund balance, they will reduce the amount of our levy to basically give that money back to the taxpayers, which we do have in play this year, which I'll talk about. The other revenue sources that we have for debt service are some long-term facility maintenance aid, the agriculture credit that the legislature implemented last year, the year before, that provides some relief for agricultural properties and the disparity that they were paying for our debt service on various bonds versus what they pay for referendum. And then there's some just other miscellaneous state credits. We do have two bonds that are included in the debt service fund, that the levy revenue is included, but we have an offsetting reduction in our general fund levy, so that it's net neutral for the taxpayers. But we have one that was, the payments come out of our operating capital, and one that comes out of our long-term facility maintenance. The LTFM one was the bridge water roof that we did probably three years ago, and the operating capital was quite a bit before that, but I believe it was also a roofing project. And then the other financing sources that you'll see is typically for any time that we do a refunding bond or sale of a bond, the capitalized interest that we did with the November 2018 bonds are included in that category as well. So it's not something we have every year, but just wanted to highlight that because it will be on the summary. And the expenditures are really just principal and interest. Those schedules are set when we authorize the bonds and sell them. And then we typically have small service fees for the companies that are managing those payments. And then the same thing, the other financing uses is kind of the offset to the other financing sources. And that's really an audit term of presentation and how it's shown in the financial statements. So this is a summary of the revenue. This is one of my favorites because there's not a whole lot going on, so it can be nice and big on the screen and everyone can see it. So you can see on our levy, I've got two years of actual, what our current proposed budget or adopted budget is, and then our proposed for 2020-21. Overall, our revenue is going up slightly, which typically would indicate that our payment schedule is going up since we're levying 105%. But the thing I'd like to point out is that the difference, you'll see our levy is actually going down, so what our taxpayers are contributing for debt service is slightly less, and that is mostly because of that state shift with the agricultural credit. So the legislature is, I think, increasing that from 40 to, 30 to 40 to 50% over the next couple of years, maybe even 60. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we get about $175,000 from the state that helps reduce the levy that we're required to ask the voters for. And so that's what that shift is. So a proposed budget of about 6.2 million in revenue. And then total expenditures, again, is very much driven on the payment schedules which are set. So $5.2 million in principal, $2 million of interest, and then just about $7,000 of, like I said, the miscellaneous fees. The other thing I did mention on the revenue is I did bump up our interest allocation. We've seen some pretty positive interest rates the last couple of years, and so I matched that to what we, where we actually ended basically in the prior fiscal year, to be a little more realistic. And then when you put it all together, this is the total summary. So as a reminder, in 1819, that was the year that we actually sold the, the bonds for the five projects that we have going on right now. And so that's what this other financing sources, the uses is actually, we also did a refunding bond that year, so there's two different things kind of happening in there, as well as the capitalized interest for those bonds. And that's really what built this fund balance up, is we had about $2.6 million of capitalized interest that we transferred from our construction fund into our debt service fund to cover the vast majority of our first two interest payments on the, on the new bonds. And so that's what's keeping that levy revenue pretty stable. And so you can see we're basically just spending those down, so I'm anticipating at the end of 2021 to be kind of back in our normal 1 million, 2 million and a half range for fund balance. So there's the 6.2, 7.2 total in expenditures, to be about a million and a half for our ending fund balance for the debt service. And then this is just the principal and interest schedule, so you can see here's the $5.2 million and the 2 million of interest. We have six current bonds outstanding, and you can see what the original amounts were and kind of where the payments are and the final maturities. This one will be falling off in 2022. That is a refunding bond that we did just this, two years ago. It's actually the one that was in the other financing sources. That was, actually we refunded the middle school bonds twice in, in their 20 years that we had them, and so that one will be paid off, and that was really the intent behind our capitalized interest, because that's a pretty large payment that's coming off for our new bonds to be coming on to keep that levy as consistent for our taxpayers as possible. And then this is all of the, all six bonds with their remaining payments for principal and interest. So again, if all else stays the same, we would be debt-free in 2039, but we know that the odds of that are pretty slim. But it gives you kind of a frame. You can see where the levy would roughly be at, and where some of the bigger drops are for those kinds of things. But really, we try to keep it as consistent as possible, so that there's a reasonable level of expectation for taxpayers. Any questions on debt service?
Debt service levy, do, or debt service, no, debt service budget, proposed budget for the debt service, I apologize. Questions? Amy?
Thanks for the presentation. I don't fully understand how the math in your columns works, just under...
Oh, hopefully it's not broken.
It probably isn't. It's the debt service summary, and I'm just trying to understand the second part, where the expenditures are, and how you come up with the, like especially...
The ending fund balance?
Yes.
So I don't subtotal the expenditures, which might be confusing. So it should, in theory, if the math is right, which I reformatted this to be in Excel, so I might have missed a formula, but it should be this minus these two numbers to equal that. So if that doesn't work out, I'll double check it, but it should.
So in the second column?
It should, in theory, oh, yep, that's confusing, I get it. So the 7 million minus the 5.8 other financing sources is actually revenue. I probably should have that column up there, that row up there. So this would be an add, and that's a subtract. So that's probably why that was confusing.
Yeah, I was thinking it must be, but...
Yeah. The label is sources, so I'll move it up there for when I put it in the, in the budget book.
Thank you.
Yep. In the audit, they do show other financing sources and uses below both of them, so that's, that's the methodology whether or not it makes sense, but I will fix it for the budget book.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
I had a question about the payment from the state for that aid. Is that a, do they pay it all at once?
No, so most of our state payments, like our aid payments are on schedule throughout the year, so we get paid on the 15th and the 30th typically. And it's, I won't say it's just evenly divided over the school year, there's certain ones that they pay at certain times. They typically make sure that all of your debt service ones are paid, because we only pay twice a year. We pay in August and January, so they make sure your revenue's consistent with those when you have to actually make payments. So it's not, not a one-time payment, it gets distributed, but the percentages in which payments they put it on are not 100% sure.
Okay, excellent. And then, just a comment on the interest, that's really a substantial amount of money. I mean, that's $100,000 from just a few years ago, so kudos to you for that. That's excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we can move on, then if there aren't any other questions, we can move on to the Internal Service Fund.
All right, so now I will talk about the Internal Service Fund. So as a reminder, this is the fund that accounts for our self-insured health and dental plans. We do track them separately in our finance system, but for financial reporting purposes, it's all one fund. And it is separately presented in our audit, so the, the main financial statements have the general fund and child nutrition and community services and debt service, but this is a totally separate presentation from our major operating funds. We went self-insured with dental in fiscal year '06, and then with our health plan in fiscal year '12. And the revenue is really just the premiums that are paid by both the district, our board contribution to health insurance and dental, the employees' contribution, and then we do have retirees that are still on our plan and their revenue as well. And then the expenditures reflect both the actual claims expense that we're paying for people actually visiting and utilizing the plans, as well as the administrative cost. We use, actually, we just switched January 1st to Medica from Blue Cross. We had had Medica probably four years ago, switched to Blue Cross. We are required by the state to go through the HITA process, which is the Health Insurance Transparency Act. So every two years, we have to solicit quotes from the various companies, and then basically, if, what is more advantageous for the plan? We take that very seriously, because it's a very emotional thing for our staff to change health plans. Our dentals went with Delta Dental the entire time we've been self-insured. They're pretty strong in the state, but there are a few more competitors for health insurance. But by moving, we saved, we're planning to save the plan about $500,000, which is pretty significant for this plan, so it did make sense based on our claims experience to switch that this year, but that is something that we don't take lightly, because it is a lot of work to get everybody switched over, and it is stressful for staff to go through that process and to make sure that they're getting the same level of benefits. And then, so Medica and Delta Dental are the administrators of the plan, and so we pay a fee to them as well to process the claims and do all of those pieces that go along with that. And then our staff loss, so we do have insurance coverage if there's a particular claimant that has a particularly bad year. We only pay up to $125,000 of their actual claims, and then the plan paid, Medica would pay after that, but we do, that's part of our administrative costs, is insurance, insurance costs basically. So our participation for dental, you can see the historical analysis, and then again, our premiums have been, this is the same premiums that we started with in fiscal year '06, which is pretty remarkable. Almost every time we meet with our consultant, they tell us how impressive our plan is. There are other districts that have not seen the same dental trends that we have been seeing, so for whatever reason, we're grateful for that, but it has allowed us to have basically the same premiums for 15 years. Participation, just as a reminder, the big jump in 1617 was the year that we were the fiscal host for the Canyon Valley Special Ed Co-op. And while we had expected that to drop similarly in 1718, it didn't go down as much as we'd anticipated, we just have had really more, more participation year over year. Like I said, it's been a very strong plan with good benefits, so we did have a slight decrease this year, but again, not very significant in, in the overall grand scheme of things. And so this is the financial summary. Again, two years of actual results, the current adopted budget. You will see that I have a revised budget on here for both the dental and the health insurance. That's a little unusual, but the numbers were different enough when I was projecting them that I wanted to revise the budget as well. Again, that's not being asked for approval tonight. We will put that on the next board meeting. And then the actual proposed budget for 2020-21. So historically, this plan has been very, very strong and consistent. You can see the fund balance is really very stable. The benefits advisory has set a goal, we used to have a goal of about $200,000 for dental and $2 million for our health insurance. And in conversations with our consultant, really the, their kind of industry standard is 40% of claims, because that number's changing all the time, rather than having a static number, so more similar to the way we have it with the general fund, where it's a percentage of our expenditures. So 40% of our expenditures is this goal down here. And then the ending fund balance, again, continuing to grow. This is basically what, what happened, and then we actually were able to reduce the premiums for a while to kind of spend that back down to a reasonable, reasonable spot. But overall, charges for services, I had projected 587 for this year, but really with our historical and the way things were landing with enrollment, it made sense to, I think it's going to come in a little bit higher. And then the interest earnings, I bumped up. Again, that's happening in all of the funds, because the, the interest is pooled cash, so when all of the, all of the funds are earning more, then I basically do an allocation at the end of the year, so all the funds benefit from that. And then, this is our insurance claims. So 543 was probably a little high in comparison, also knowing that our enrollment has dipped slightly. So proposing that revised budget at 514, and then 526 for the proposed budget. So overall, really stable and consistent, really just kind of cleaning things up to make it as realistic as possible, is where I'm at with that. So the health insurance fund, same thing with participation. 1617 was the addition of SEFC, and then in 1718, they came off. Again, did not see, similar to, similar to dental, we didn't see the same fall off, but again, it's been multiple years of no increase in premiums, and we know that that's been drawing people to the plan, which you can see reflected in our numbers. It's been very, very consistent. And this is the premium. So actually, in 1819, we reduced the premium. The benefits advisory group, we had negotiated with the teachers a $50 reduction in our board contribution. And then the benefits advisory group actually proposed a $100 reduction over, in the overall premium, which basically resulted in both employees and the district saving $50 per month for each plan, which was definitely the goal of moving to self-insurance, was to stabilize the rates, when you hear lots of other districts having double-digit increases in their health insurance premiums. So we've had a really great run of really claims expense, and the fund has performed strongly. Again, two years of audit results, the current budget, the budget revision for this current year, and then the proposed budget. What I can tell you is we are now entering almost our third year, probably at two and a half years of some really significant claims. Sometimes those are claims that are really significant, and then they fall off, if there's a specific illness that's treated and resolved. We do pay for an analytic tool as part of our admin fee that can give us a lot more information, not about the specific people necessarily, but about the types of things that are generating those expenditures, and those are ongoing chronic conditions that we're seeing. And so we're not anticipating our claims experience to slow down in the near future. So what that basically means is that we are anticipating that we will be increasing our premiums starting in 2021. The benefits advisory committee had already met and agreed not to, because we do have strong fund balance currently, but we don't want to get to a point where we spend it all down and then have to do a really significant increase. That doesn't make sense. We'd rather do incremental to kind of slow the, slow the problem and right-size that, that amount, if that makes sense. So you can see the, the bottom again is at 40% of expenditures. So we ended 1819 with about $5.6 million, which again, is well over. Their typical medical inflation trend that they use is about 8%. We have been trending at 10 to 12. We have been trending at 10 to 12, just based on our current population. So the revised budget, again, this is partially due to participation, partially just making sure that we had the, because the rates declined, and this is based on a fiscal year, and our actual plan year for the health insurance is a calendar year, so there's just some timing differences of the way things are shown when we meet with our consultant versus when I present it here. But overall, pretty consistent, again, just increasing. You can see the interest is also increasing. We ended at 85, I should have upped that one, missed that. But overall, about $12 million for total sources, and then a little over seven for That math does not appear to be, oh, this is the beginning, got it. Struggling a little today with my sinus infection, sorry. Anyway, so I'm expecting to end at about 5.1. I had originally thought we'd end at about 5.6, which was fairly consistent, but again, that, that trend is really, really staying strong with our expenditures. We ended at 6.2 last year, and we're currently projected to end at about 6.3. We did save on the admin fee, you'll see that went down a little bit, partially due to a small dip in participation, but also just due to the HITA process, we have saved money year over year on that, which has been one of the positive things that came out of the legislature. So projecting to end 2021 at about 4.5 million, again, still over that fund balance goal, but again, when you're looking at 40% of your expenditures, that is relative to your total expenditures, so that will obviously continue to increase, so we really need to make sure we're not depleting that too quickly. So that is my anticipation of what's coming up. I think I hit all the highlights in my narrative, but certainly, I would welcome any questions you have on that, because that's a lot of information.
Questions, comments? Come.
So are we hitting more stop loss?
Yes.
Or more individuals are doing that?
Yep, so the first probably five years, we averaged six or seven participants that would hit stop loss. We actually used to have it at 100,000, and we did an analysis on how much the stop loss insurance costs us versus the difference of how much they were going over, and we decided to increase it to 125. So we accepted $25,000 more risk per individual, but we saved quite a bit in our insurance, and that was also the same year that our claims went kind of really not consistent with what they had been. We are averaging probably 13 people hitting stop loss, if not more, and they're, they're exceeding 20% of our total claims, so.
But you can sort of, without knowing, or without, I guess, without knowing how much they, their total medical expenses are, you can still budget at the 125, right?
You can, yes. So we're capped at 125, so our consultant does a calculation that's our basically max exposure for our risk, which would calculate at the 125, but the thing that we have to consider is, the more claimants that we have at 125, the more the Medica's going to come back and say, that cost us a lot of money, and your insurance is going to double, or, you know, not, probably not double, but they take, it kind of is a ying and a yang on that, so. So yes, for one year, we're capped, but it does have some recurring effects.
Great question. Ellen?
Val, can you remind us, so as you're thinking about increasing the rates, or I guess you've decided to increase the rates, how does that work in terms of communicating? You talked about just changing from Blue Cross to Medicare and back and forth is sort of an emotional thing.
Yep.
So I can imagine any sort of rate increase, how would that get communicated, and how does that work into the open enrollment period?
So we're, we're working on a plan to start communicating this message, just so people are aware that this is kind of where we're headed, so it's not a surprise, because we did negotiate no increase in the health insurance with the NEA contract, which is locked for two years. So the next, we felt strongly about holding the rates flat this year because of that, but we also don't want to get into a point where we're going to increase it 12% or something. So we would look at increasing it next January. The, the actual increase will be determined by the benefits advisory committee. So our consultant comes in, and we meet probably two or three times to look at kind of where we've been historically, where it appears we're going, and what the fund is doing, and what they're projecting, and then they come up with a recommendation. So it's not just Molly and I deciding with the consultant, it's a representative from all of the major bargaining groups that sit on that committee, so it's really a collaborative effort. And then that would go into effect January first, and then we would negotiate with the teachers next spring. I would anticipate that that obviously would be an ask, if not an ask from them, something we would propose an increase to, so I'm planning for that in the general fund budget as well. But that's kind of the, the process, we are hoping to share this message of a little bit. The HR team has been doing a really good job of trying to communicate out all of the programs that Medica has. We've been able to add a few things at no cost to the program that are beneficial. So we just rolled out the OMADA program, which is specifically targeting people with multiple conditions or prediabetic. So you get a free scale and a coaching program and a whole bunch of things, and as long as you're kind of checking in on their benchmarks, it's, it's been proven to be pretty successful. Obviously requires engagement on behalf of the participant, but things like that, that we're trying to just help people understand how their actions impact the plan, so being a little more proactive in that way, and letting them know what they have access to. But that's, that was a little more than you asked for, but.
Excellent. Great question. No?
Thank you for your leadership skills and providing us with a clear, crystal report.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Rob?
Okay, here's a non-accountant question.
I don't know if I can answer this.
You said that the employee contribution is a revenue source on this fund, but it must be an expenditure from the general fund, because it's.
The employee contribution is not an expenditure, but the district contribution is an expenditure. Yes.
Yeah, the employer is what I meant, yeah.
Yes, employer, yep. So that is, when I present the general fund, the salary and benefit total, in that benefit total is our health insurance contribution on behalf of our staff. And then each payroll period, each month, my staff do basically a journal entry to move that over to the internal service.
Other questions?
It was kind of an accounting question.
Other questions or comments?
Well, thank you, this is always a great story, and of course, we have to be reminded that we received the 2018 Local Government Innovation Award for this program, so it continues to be really strong, despite, I understand, some of the, some of the maybe challenges we are going to look at in the next year or so, but I think one thing we also talk about and are committed to is recruiting and retaining high-quality staff, and I think this is, this really is, goes a long way towards doing that, I think, and you're right, I mean, districts have double-digit healthcare increases, not just school districts, but, but many other industries as well, so it continues to be a huge win. And thank you, Val, because I think the reason we love these reports is because you're so meticulous in your numbers, and I think about all of the budgets and all the line items, I don't know if you've ever added that total, but just your explanation of stop loss, that's one item, and look at everything that had to go into that calculation. So we always appreciate these reports, because we understand that you have such a strong working knowledge of every single number there, and we realize that, again, stop loss is an example, you don't just put in a number, there's a lot of calculation, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you. We have about 7,000 account codes.
Oh, let's see, there you go.
Thank you.
That's amazing. Okay, excellent. So that is actually our last item for discussion and report, so, for the evening, so we actually can move along to approval of the consent agenda, or the consent grouping. There were a few personnel items, and another, there was a grant opportunity in the table file, so is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Oh, okay, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Rob, is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on. We have two items for individual action this evening. The first is transfer of district property to the city of Northfield for the Highway 246 Street project. There was a lot of detailed information in our packet, and we did do a fair amount of discussion at our previous board meeting last month, so, Erin?
Just a, Val might actually have more detail. I'm going to let Val actually.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Val.
No, that's just fine.
No, no problem. So this is basically what, what you saw at the last meeting that we discussed. We did have the district number fixed, so it's now actually 659. We did meet with our, we had a conference call with our attorney, and they've reviewed the documents as well. The city did put in all of the requests that we had into their documentation, so really, everything that we talked about last, at the last meeting, is kind of locked in and ready to go, and it's just really needing approval at this point.
Okay, so we had a great discussion at our last board meeting regarding this proposal, so are there any questions or comments? So we do, there is the motion, it is a resolution, but it can be, we can administer it versus, via regular motion. No, yeah, I'm going to ask for a motion, so I'm sorry. So is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing donation of property as presented? Moved by Rob, is there a second? Second by Ellen. Okay, so I, I did just use the word resolution, and we aren't doing a roll call vote, so that's why I wanted to explain that we can do this versus regular motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item for individual action is the resolution requiring administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing for next year. This is one that we do along our normal timetable every year, so it's not necessarily that we are making recommendations regarding programming and staffing, but we do need to have this resolution in place, should that come to fruition.
I don't think I have anything else to add, this just allows us to continue to move forward with the budget process, too.
Excellent, thanks, Erin. Okay, so ask for a motion, and then can ask for questions or comments. So is there a motion to authorize the administration to make recommendations for additions and reductions in programs, and for adding or discontinuing positions? Is there a motion? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions or comments regarding this resolution? This is actually a true resolution, requiring a roll call vote, so Anita?
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Bronya?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So those are our two items for individual action. Now, we have items for information. First is renaming existing Greenville Park Elementary. Director Bailey?
Thank you. So we are, need to start the process of picking a building name, to no longer call it either Remodeled Greenville Park or Current Greenville Park Elementary. So I'm here to talk to you both about that process, and then the kind of a shift in names for the Community Services Division at the same time. So we have, as a group of coordinators, and myself as the director, have been talking about for over a year, looking to move the Community Services Division back to the Community Education Department. This has a couple of reasons behind it. The, we were, if you've been here on the board for a while, we were the Community Education Department approximately, I believe, 17 years ago. We switched to Community Services at that time to acknowledge taking on the recreation programming from the city of Northfield, is my understanding, it was right before I came to work for the district, but it's my understanding that was the reason to acknowledge that programming. I think over the last 17 or so years, we've very publicly acknowledged that programming, we have it online, it's in our brochure, we, you know, acknowledge that in our presentations at city council and in the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. I think for us, we struggle for publicly, what do we do as a Community Services Division? We get lots of calls for, that people might think we are the Community Action Center, we are Health Finders, we serve a number of other purposes, and so, one, moving back to community education, we hope that provides some clarity in the work that we do as a department. And the second reason, the Minnesota Community Education Association has spent significant dollars in the last couple of years branding community education. As a statewide organization for both lobbying efforts, for efforts of understanding of the general public of what programming is community education, as we sit right now, we are unable to access a lot of those branding logos and hashtags and things that they've put a lot of money into, because it's all said "community education," or "community ed" does not say "community services." And the third reason, I think, for, for our staff as a department, having, helping, I think, in the public and within other districts, people acknowledge "community ed" is part of a district, they have less understanding that "community services" is part of a, a larger school district. And so we have spent time as department over the last year, kind of exploring what this would need to make that name change, and do feel that at the time when we are making a move, and we are already spending some money on new envelopes, or logos, and letter heads, that this would be the time to make the move. So going out tomorrow is an email that address asks people for suggestions for naming the building, what will be Remodeled Greenville Park Elementary, and it includes information about the name change from the Community Services Department to the Community Education Department, so that if you are thinking about a name, you, everyone would understand the intention that our department has in its name change moving forward as well. So that email will go out tomorrow morning, it will, like I said, allow people to provide suggestions, it will go to all staff members who will be working in that building, it will go to parents in our ECFE, hand-to-hand preschool, early mentors, it will go to anyone who's registered for a community services program in the last year, and will also be on both our Community Services Facebook page and the District Facebook page, from form for people to submit their suggestions for names, and then we hope that we get a significant amount, we will then narrow it down to about three that we could bring to the board for consideration. And people can submit more than one name, they have been holding a list of 10 names in the last couple of months, waiting for the stop change. So is there, is there any questions that people might have about kind of the naming process, or the process of changing from community services to community education?
No.
One more to come to the board.
The, the names for that, so the survey is scheduled to be open through the, not a week from this Friday, which is the 21st, so I am not sure if that means it would be ready for, it wouldn't be able to be included in the board packet, so I would assume the first board meeting in March.
Jeff?
At 330-some school districts, I would imagine that the norm, the standard is community education, with branding, when you hear "education," you think of the school district, and, you know, every, every reason has its time, maybe it was a good idea at the time to put the community services, but, I mean, the reality is, how many school districts use "community ed"? There's probably got to be about 90% of them, and not many go outside and have a different name, which you think, or you should.
That's correct. There are some that are community education and recreation, the vast majority are community edu, are just community education, even if they are serving as a sponsor or host of recreation programming for their city.
Yeah, seems like an obvious name change, as far as I'm concerned.
Good comments, thanks, Jim. Other questions, comments?
I should say, we did also bring this to the Community Services Advisory Committee, so they, they did hear the same information at their general.
I think it's really exciting, I think it'll be great to see some new sort of branding and some logos, and, and, you know, to your point. and, and, you know, to your point, excellent time to do it. So I think it's really exciting. And then there's those that may not ever know, so you can change. But we all know, so that's true. All right, excellent. All right, good. So that'll be real fun to see our community participate. Sounds like they have lots of opportunities to give us their, their input on a, on a name, so that'll be a really great process. So thank you for, for getting that process going. Construction update number 21.
Well, they, they keep constructing. If you haven't been over to Bridgewater, lately the Sibley classrooms are open. So if you haven't had a chance, they did move in about a week and a half ago or two, so they started moving in. So that is really great. The bids, the remodel of Greenville Park Elementary is out for bid, so that went, two weeks ago, Friday, that was out. If there's any amendments, that will be out this Friday, and then that process will close. They continue, we've had some small user group meetings for things like colors and textures and furniture for Greenville, the, what will be the new Greenville Park Elementary, so things continue.
Excellent. Questions or comments? I know that Nancy Antoin, if you are able to contact her ahead of time, we'd really be thrilled to give any board members a tour. I was able to, to have a tour, and it's just, it's really so fun to walk through and to see and to have it, you know, go from what we saw on the screen and the conversations about materials and different things, and actually see it. It's, it's really, it's really exciting. And then the progress being made on Greenville Park right now is crazy. I mean, just really taking shape. And there's a long way to go, but it's really exciting to see. So, excellent. Okay. So enrollment report is our last item for information.
Yes, and that was included at the very end of your packet. Just very, very stable. You can see there's a slight change in student numbers, but overall very stable from what you saw last month.
Okay, excellent. Any questions on the enrollment report? All right, okay, we're cruising right along. We can now move to future meetings. Next meeting, a regular school board meeting is Monday, February 24th. Then as a reminder to board members, we do have a special board meeting on Thursday, February 27th, and that is to approve the bids for the remodeled, renovated, existing Greenville Park Elementary. They have a name for it by the time they, no, I guess we won't. So that's Thursday, February 27th. And then we have a regular board meeting in March, on March 9th. And then on Monday, March 30th, we have a special board meeting, and that's to approve the Longfellow bids, Longfellow bids. So those two special meetings, Thursday, February 27th, for the remodel of the existing Greenville Park Elementary bids. Monday, March 30th, special board meeting for the bids on the Longfellow renovation. And then two regular board meetings, February 24th and March 9th. We have traditionally done one meeting, regular school board meeting in the month of March, because of spring break. So with that, everyone, great meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Noel. Is there a second by Jeff? Second is by Jeff. I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.